Board meeting of Monday, March 21st, 2022. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We have all five members of the planning board with us this evening. Bob Schaffer is remote as he's been, so all votes will be taken via roll call this evening. We have Joe Janowitz from Town Staff with us, the town planner, as well. And so that's it. So we would like to get started, as we always do, with open forum. Does anybody on the board have anything for open forum?
Nope.
Joe, anything from Town Staff for open forum?
Just if anybody is here for five make piece, they have requested to continue to the next meeting, which is on April 4th. And then otherwise, just for informational for the board, myself, Jeremy Downs, Paul Starrett, met with Matt Waterman out by Wendell, future Wendell Place project.
Yeah.
As a condition of approval, there is the condition from the board to have a plan for a sidewalk from that property towards Depot Street.
Yeah.
So we met on site there, came up with some ideas. So at the next meeting, Land Tech would like to come by to present what their plans are to date, kind of get some direction from the board.
Great.
Kind of go over why we think it should go the way it should go.
Okay.
And then go from there.
Sounds great.
Good.
Excellent. Thanks, Joe. Open it up to the public. Does anybody have anything for open forum? Yeah, please step up to the microphone, just state your name for the record and...
My name is Paul Moss. I'm from Two Wagon Trail Road in Westford, longtime resident, 43 years, so I've been here a while. I'm addressing you in particular because I had sent, Dylan, I sent you some information about two weeks ago regarding pending changes to the building code in the state.
Okay.
And also associated with the towns Clean Energy Committees in preparation for their Net Zero 2050 roadmap, I sent you information to be distributed to the board.
Okay.
And I didn't hear anything back from you, so I figured I'd make that a public request. If you haven't done so, I'd ask you to cycle that information through the board itself because...
You sent it to my Westford email address?
Yeah, the westford.gov address.
Okay.
Is that a bad address to use or is that going?
No, but it's not one that I check all the time, and I have about six. And I was in Germany last week, so I was a bit out of pocket. So I will...
Okay.
I'll dig into that and I can get that. It's always good to copy Town Staff if you're sending anything to me anyway.
Okay, good. The bottom line up front was that I sent you some information regarding the pending changes in the state building code associated with the green stretch code, as well as a pending specialized code that sits above that that will be in effect at the end of the year.
Yeah.
And that's going to have a major influence on what we all do going forward. And in parallel with that is the Clean Energy Committee's Climate Action Plan, which is essentially requesting electrification of all new construction in the town going forward. Now, I know that hasn't been necessarily reviewed with you folks yet, but it is in that direction that they're moving in concert with what the state is doing at that level. So there's going to be, there's going to be a lot of activity in energy in this space, and I expect that this board will have to be heavily engaged with that Clean Energy group. I'm not affiliated with it, but I'm deeply concerned with the issues of climate and the crisis associated with it. So what I meant, the requests I make to you is to get engaged with the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee to help shape that implementation plan so that it's acceptable to a number of different town boards, not just an energy-associated board.
Yeah.
And please do look at the state information I provided you, which gives you sort of a leg up on what they're doing, and that I expect will be officialized by the end of this year. So that's...
Okay.
Okay?
Great.
Thank you.
We'll have a look at it. Anybody else in the audience for open forum this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the public hearing items. The first public hearing item is PB 2207, Site Plan Review at 28 North Street, the Westford Highway Garage Radio Tower. And this is for relocation of an existing structure for a telecommunications tower, it looks like.
I move that we waive the reading of the public hearing notice.
Excellent. Motion and a second to waive the reading of the public hearing notice. All those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
I say aye.
I move we open the public hearing.
Before we do that, is there a motion to waive the, waive the fees associated with this application per section, I believe, 946?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second to waive the fees associated with this application. All those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
I say aye.
Now I move we open the public hearing for the 28 North Street.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second to open the public hearing. All those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye. Is there a motion to waive the, give me a second, waive the application requirement for a plan submission under section 945 in accordance with section 946?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second to waive the plan requirements. All those in favor say aye. Bob?
I have a question.
Yep.
Did you also want to include 9.5 on this one?
Which is?
I forget, but I think you asked for it, oops, on the other one.
So we did ask for a waiver for the PLS, the survey staff? Is that what you're referring to?
Oh, never mind. It's not, so you want 9.4.4, 9.4.5?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, those two you want waived, not the whole. Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's 9.4.5 he also wanted.
Yep, 9.4.4 and 9.4.5.
Yeah.
Yes. In accordance with 9.4.6.
So friendly minute.
Great. Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye. Great. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. So Steve Cronin, Director of Public Works, here with Fire Chief Joe Targ. So DPW, along with the Engineering Department, has submitted to you a site plan review application to allow for the installation of a public service, public safety communications tower at the highway garage at 28 North Street. The site's been selected for a number of reasons, but mainly it's a town-owned site at one of the higher elevations in town, and it has the existing communication infrastructure in place to support this tower. You know, mutually beneficial to both the Fire Department as well as the Department of Public Works. And I'll defer to Joe. He can speak to the Fire Department's need for this tower, where it's coming from, and how soon we would like to install it.
The tower was the one that was out here for the hose tower. I was attached to that. It's not a freestanding structure, that's why they couldn't reuse it over here. So it would be attached to the back of the highway garage, DPW garage. The thing, one of the things that's attractive about the site, it does have a town network, so it gives us a back hall. It's what we call a simulcast site and a receive site. We just have, it's very hilly over in that area, you know, once, even for Prospect Hill, you can see it, but once you get up to the 40 area, it's tough, tough communication. So we went, couldn't try to minimize what we put on for antennas. We're using one that's called a dipole. It's actually two, one for police and one fire, but it's one antenna. It's got two cables on it, so we'll kind of try to reduce that amount. But it would be very helpful to get over there. Delination, we could put these anywhere the receivers years ago. They ran on copper phone lines from Verizon. They're eliminating them all, so now we have to go to network. If we don't go town network, then we have to do Comcast for a back hall, which is about $300 a month.
Yeah. Yeah. Makes sense?
So from a public works standpoint, doesn't have any impact on basically the existing operations. You know, it's going to be, as Joe said, affixed to the building. It's adjacent to an existing communications room, so we're just going to basically make some penetrations right next to the tower, bring in the cabling infrastructure. We do have emergency power up there as well, which was important to the Fire Department. So this will provide them with some redundancy in their system. Certainly something that I think they need.
And police also, dual site. So we've been trying to co-locate on these just to cut down expenses.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Makes sense. One quick question. I had noticed, it's 52 feet high, right?
So the tower itself is 65 feet high, and then the largest antenna, that's going to be on top of the antenna, is an additional 18 feet.
Okay.
So the total building height is 31.3 feet, so this is going to sit roughly 52 feet above that total.
Got it. Excellent. Anything else you want to offer before we go to the board for questions? Nope, I think that's it. Okay, great. Darren, do you want to start?
Sure. So the existing tower that's out here right now, is that entirely being moved over to the?
The one that's by the police station, that's the brand-new one that they installed. The other one's already gone. They took it down when they built that one.
All right, so the one that's currently there, there's no change to that one, the new one?
Right.
But this other one's all up there. Okay, that's fine. That's what I was just curious about. And then, there's obviously an existing structure, doesn't affect any parking spaces or anything like that, so I think it's, I have no other questions.
Great, thanks, Darren. Mike?
I've got nothing.
Okay.
I have a question for Jeremy. Since we usually go to engineering for review of the plans, but they're the ones, Jeremy's the one who did them, so I'm just curious, did you have another engineer in the engineering department review your work?
We, well, Paul Starrett also reviewed it, the Fire Department reviewed it, Steve reviewed it. It was pretty straightforward, we're just relocating existing structures, so we felt the need to have a peer review.
Okay, just checking.
Prior to the opening of the public hearing?
Building Commissioner also reviewed it and the foundation design.
The foundation was engineered by a different engineer.
Yep. All right. No, great.
Nope, that was it.
Bob, any questions on the application?
Yeah, I had one, a couple of questions. One, I was trying to look at the plan and the location and just making sure that it's protected from vehicles. Are there going to be any kind of safety bollards or some kind of impediments placed to keep it from being hit?
So it's in the back of the building, not where any vehicle traffic is. You know, we do have two existing entry doors to a liquid storage room, so you know, if we were to place bollards, we'd have to, you know, at least make sure that we maintain access to those doors. I think it's protected enough that it doesn't necessarily need it. The foundation is three feet by three feet by three feet and actually extends, or would extend above the ground, I believe, a foot or a foot and a half. So it would be, the base of the tower would be pretty well-protected as installed.
Okay, and the last question I have was just given the mass height, is there, does it require having a safety light or anything on it for aviation safety?
No.
No, we did look into that requirement. It doesn't require a light.
What is the guidance, can I ask what the guidance on that would be at what point?
I don't know offhand. It is an FAA requirement.
208.
It's within some air force airport and stuff like that.
200, okay.
Well, it depends, yeah, like you said.
Yeah, I guess when I was going through the package, I was just kind of reminded that, I think it's like the highest point in the area, correct?
For that particular area, yes, it is. Yep.
Okay. That's all I have.
Great. Thanks. Yeah, I mean, I was mostly looking into distance from closest to butters, and at 703 feet, given the height of the tower, it seems like there's plenty of distance there from a safety perspective, so I also have no questions. Great, so the board has opined. At this point, we'll open it up to the public. Does anybody in the audience have any comments on application PB 2207? Microphone is there, step up, state your name for the record and make your comments.
Paul Moss, Wagon Trail Road again. Just had a quick question regarding Haystack Radio Observatory and whether the fact you've moved this tower to a very high proximity, relatively closer to the observatory, is there any interaction, any conversation, anybody care?
We actually have a site at Haystack.
You do?
We have it at MIT.
And they have no trouble with this frequency?
No.
Perfect.
It was all approved by them years ago, yeah.
Rest of my case, that's great. Thank you.
Good evening.
Todd Palumbo to Emily Way. I am on a butter to the Highway Garage property. A project that you guys approved many years ago. And I opposed that project because of the concern of what it would do to my property and its value, and I have proven right that for almost 20 years now, that about 15 years now that it's been in existence, you've been damaging my property. I've had adverse effects from that town, Highway Garage. Several years ago, there was a petition to put a cell tower at that property. That was then turned down by the Select Board because they did not want to change the permitting of the location. And now you want to put another radio tower on top of there. As in a butter, I am concerned about, number one, the safety. I have questions about the frequencies and how much power will be emitted from that through the radio frequencies, and I'm also concerned about my property value with the unsightly tower next door to me.
Are you the closest to butter here that we can see in this diagram?
No, I'm on the driveway.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's one Emily. Okay, thank you. I don't know if you have any comments on frequencies?
It's UHF, and it does not provide any interference there in the 400 megahertz area. It was, frequencies were coordinated with the state police. He's a FPO certified coordinator, and he took care of it. So they look around to make sure for interference and adjacent frequencies or any kinds of problems, and he okayed it and licensed it.
My concern had nothing to do with radio interference, had to do with human flesh interference.
Okay, no, there'd be none.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, anybody else from the public care to comment on the application? Please.
You didn't address my point about my property value.
So I don't, I don't know how to address that point, other than it's, I guess, hard for this board to know what the impact to your property value is going to...
If the area is not zoned or allowed, is right. You'd have to change the zone?
No.
No.
Radio towers in general are allowed by right because of federal and state laws, and this is also because it's a town one. It's actually, there's a section in our bylaws concerning the town being able to put towers, radio towers on buildings.
I can, I can tell you from personal experience, there've been several cellphone applications in town in residential A zoning districts in significantly smaller parcels than this one, at significantly higher height, actually.
Then why did the Select Board allow it? Because they didn't want to change the zoning then?
I'm not familiar with that decision by the Select Board to comment on that, like, off the cuff. I guess we could...
They're different anyway.
What's that?
I think cell towers are different than a radio tower anyway, in this scenario.
I believe that's correct.
Right. Cell towers have its own classification.
Right. But even that, I don't believe requires a change in zoning.
No.
No.
So, don't know how to answer your question because I don't, I don't mean this, no, to be negative, but I don't know that you're stating true facts. You don't have to rezone a parcel in order to cite a cell tower. The owner just has to be willing to put it on there and get into a lease essentially with somebody who's able to construct the tower.
So there's already one nearby at the observatory, why does it need to be?
You need to get up.
Observatory is receive only.
So there's no other location in town that's suitable for this tower, and why is it being relocated?
It was relocated to save money.
Yeah, so what, so what I heard was this was the tower that had been formally cited here on the police station. That was replaced with a freestanding tower when the, this building was redone recently. It sounds like this equipment has been in storage or has been otherwise taken down, and they're looking to cite it to augment the town's telecommunications capability as it relates to public safety.
We have a receiver that's still online. It's probably not going to be lasting long up at MIT. We basically have it up there for our guys when they go inside to fight a fire in the building.
Yeah.
You basically lose communication. So at least, they might not be able to hear dispatch, but dispatch can hear them, and that's the key for up there. We don't have a fiber up there. We're trying to work with Haystack or MIT to do something with that, but radio is a long-term problem.
Yeah.
So that hill is the second highest hill in town. The first highest hill in town is, I believe, right around here.
Prospect Hill, yes.
So why not put it here?
We are on there. We are on there.
This is like a repeater?
It's, it's several, we have about eight or nine repeaters in town or receive sites, and this will be a simulcast, so it will allow better penetration to the basements if you have a basement fire or something going on in the house. Some of these houses, you lose communications inside. It's pretty bad, especially when the foliage is on the trees.
Yeah.
And this isn't like a cellphone, cell tower, as you can see, it's just a single pole. It's not going to have that big frame, and it's not as tall, so I assume there are trees that's going to block it, and the power will be low enough that it'll, it'll drop off really quickly. So probably by the edge of the property, it's negligible power.
I heard you say it was going to be 65 feet from the ground at that point, right?
The top of the antenna.
The tower is 65 feet.
Yeah. Okay, that's pretty tall.
And visible.
There is a tower that's on the other end. I don't know how tall it is, but it's, when you pull in on the other end of the building, there's one there. For example, it's, I'm not sure quite what the height is of that one.
That's a little, little short than this. It's used primarily for our two-way radio communication for the Highway Department and Public Works Apartments. It is in the front of the building. We do have existing antennas as well on the top of the salt shed, I believe.
Yep.
Which would be relocated to this tower and removed from there. So, you know, as Joe said, there are some dead spots in town as far as communication goes that they've been trying to fill in from a public safety standpoint. I think they recently installed antennas on top of the Cameron Senior Center as well to handle some of those. You know, but this is mainly, you know, selected for its elevations so that it can reach those areas that don't currently have strong communication.
So how many towers will, antennas will be there?
Only the one, single one for police and fire, and then I think whatever Steve has, he might have something for telemetry or...
No, the one that's coming from the salt shed is going to be replaced with?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so it would replace the, the one bipolar antenna that they're adding is going to replace what is currently on the salt shed, so that would be taken down.
So there'll be two antennas at this location?
Two antennas, yeah.
And then any other ones that anyone wants to put once it's there?
No.
I'm sorry, are you kidding?
Any other additional antennas?
We're not talking about that, no. We're talking about the two that they're putting up there.
Yeah, but it paves the way for lots of others.
We started talking about one, and suddenly I just heard them say a second one, that's why I was...
Anything else from the public? Okay. All right.
I feel Engineering did a great job with the plans, and I think it's fairly simple, so I'm happy with closing and voting.
Yeah?
Agreed.
Okay. Is there a motion to close PB 2207 then?
Second.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing on PB 2207. All those in favor say aye. Darren?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And I say aye. Would you like to forward a motion?
Let him do it.
I move that we vote to approve PB 2207, Site Plan Review for the Duke Tower at 28 North Street, the Westford Highway Garage Radio Tower.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve PB 2207. All those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye.
So we don't have a draft decision. I assume the decision won't have much, but can you just share it with us for review?
Sure. We'll sign that next time, yeah? Fantastic. All right, we will move on to PB 2208, which is Site Plan Review at 60 Forge Village Road, Westford Fire Training Facility. Is there a motion to waive the reading of the public hearing notice for PB 2208?
Move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye.
I move we waive the fees for PB 2208.
Second.
Motion and a second to waive the fees associated with PB 2208. All those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
I say aye.
Okay. I move we open the public hearing for PB 2208.
Second.
Motion and a second to open PB 2208 for public hearing. All those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
I say aye. Is there a motion to waive the application requirement relative to site plan submission under section 945 in accordance with section 946?
And 944, I think they also give on it.
Yeah, and it's not written in the staff report, but that's fine. Sure, 944, 945, all the, yes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to waive the requirements for plan submission. All those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
I say aye. Good evening again.
Good evening. For the record, Jeremy Downs, Assistant Town Engineer. With me tonight is Steve Cronin, Director of Public Works. And we also have Chief Targ with us, as well as former Deputy Chief Dan Brico and current Deputy Chief Mike Dennehy. So if it's okay with the board, I'd like to give a brief presentation on the site I'd like to give a brief presentation on the site and the site design, then turn it over to the fire to give a little bit of overview of what they're proposing as far as training activities.
Great.
So, the purpose of this project is the current fire training facility is located at the Rogers Fire Station, which is at 35 Tom Farm Road. So as you probably know, there's a proposed senior housing development, affordable housing development, and a new food pantry that's going to go at that site. So, in order to accommodate that future development, we need to relocate the existing fire training facility and with selected, or it has been selected to relocate it to, or propose it to be relocated to 60 Forge Village Road, which is the current location for the water department's Forge Village Road Treatment Plant and their administrative offices. So, a little, little overview of the 60 Forge Village Road property. It's about 26 acres in size, so on Forge Village Road, obviously. To the north, it's bounded by, or abutted, an existing water department parcel. It's about 88 acres. To the east, it abuts three residential properties and Cold Spring Road. To the south, it borders Patton Road with a few different residential properties to the south. And then to the west, it abuts the Pine Grove Cemetery. And also, on the existing property, on the western boundary, there's a 90-foot wide New England power easement. So there's power lines that you can actually, you can see through, on the aerial photo. As far as the location on the site, we're going to be looking to put the facility in the northwest corner, in this area here. It'll be located about 200 feet off of Forge Village Road. So we'll have a 200-foot paved driveway to provide access. 20 feet wide country drainage. That will, that will provide access to the new training area, which will be about 110 feet by 110 feet paved as well. In the center of the paved area, there'll be the actual fire training structure. It's kind of hard to see here. It's at a small scale, but it's the red area, and let's maybe give you a little better view. So we're basically proposing to use, they're basically steel shipping containers that are fitted out with different training props, burn rooms, things like that. Up on the screen right there is a kind of a good visual representation. So we're proposing that in the center of the paved area. It'll allow full access around the training structure. The tower ladder will be able to navigate completely around the structure. And, so as I said, we'll have two, or there'll be two currently proposed, two steel connects boxes, shipping containers, that will be stacked to give a two-story training facility. We're proposing that the training facility be elevated on concrete piers about four feet off the ground. That will give us access underneath for storage, as well as maybe some future confined space entry. We'll gain access to the structure through stairs, as we show here. This is just a visual representation of what it might look like. We still have to go through a RFP and procurement process in order to, to select the actual structure that will be built. But it will be built using the steel shipping containers. The containers are eight feet wide by eight and a half feet tall by 40 feet long. On the current plan, we also show a dashed area adjacent to the two structures that we're proposing, and that would give us future, it'd be a future expansion. So that would give us the ability to add a third structure if, you know, in the future we determine that possible. And that may be, as soon as going through the procurement process, we find that there's enough money in the budget, we'll add that, we'll add that third container. If not, it could be added at a, at a future date. But we just wanted to propose it now, just so it's, you know, shown as part of the plan. So, the, as I, as I mentioned, they'll have training props inside, they'll have mazes, things like that, that'll allow them to simulate real-world search and rescue. They'll have burn rooms that'll allow them to do real burns. So really be able to simulate real-world, you know, type of conditions. As far as the stormwater management on site, the proposed, proposed site will not require stormwater management permit. There'll be less than acre disturbance. So, but we have designed the stormwater management system to meet the stormwater standards. So we're proposing the site to basically sheet flow across, across the paved training area to a low point where we'll have a catch basin. It'll be a deep sump catch basin with a hood. It'll then discharge into an infiltration basin. The basin's designed to accommodate a 100-year storm. So, anything over that, if we get a really extreme event, the basin would overtop into a, it's about a 20-foot deep natural depression on the site. So there'll be no water runoff that leaves the site, even if the infiltration basin were to overflow. During training activities, when they're using water, we'll be able to turn a couple valves, and the water will discharge into an underground cistern. It'll be a 10,000-gallon tank that will store the water for reuse at a later time. Or if it fills up and they need more training, then it'll have to be disposed of off-site. And that's in accordance in the, with the agreement with the water commissioners. As far as other amenities on site, we're going to have to, or other improvements, we're going to have to bring in a six-inch water main from Forge Village Road. At the, at the end of the water main, we'll have a fire hydrant that will allow, you know, for, you know, water for training purposes. We're also proposing a new electrical service that will come off a pole on Forge Village Road and connect to the new training structure. That provides power for interior lighting, exterior security lighting, as well as any of the power needed for the burn rooms, for the sensors or controls. We're currently proposing a propane tank and pad along with a propane gas service that would supply gas to the training structure. At this point, we're providing that in the proposal. Again, when we go through the procurement process, that may or may not be part of the final, part of, part of the final structure. And that propane would be for propane burn room. Let's see, the, the driveway will have a gate that will provide, that will prevent unauthorized access. We'll have a small eight-by-10 storage container on site for storage. And then we'll also have a porta potty that will need to be on site for any kind of training activities. So basically, that's it in a nutshell. I could turn it over to the chiefs if you want to give overview.
I think Mike's gonna have a...
Deputy Chief Denny?
I'm open. If you guys have questions regarding the training evolutions we generally do. Right now, the current fire training facility we have was not built for us to do any interior fire. We can't light fires. It's just, it's concrete. We haven't really been able to utilize that part of our job. We do a lot of like simulate ladder drills, stuff like that. The new training facility will allow us to do actual live-fire training with Class A materials, basically straw, hay, stuff like that. The gas, if we go that route, the gas will allow us to experience the higher temperatures and see the, the fire evolve based on the gas rather than, because it's different properties and Class A materials. Other training we'll be able to do besides, it, one of the props is a roof prop, so we're able to practice doing, venting a roof. Right now, we don't have that ability because our, our training grounds is concrete. So we, to get that scenario, we usually pile up a bunch of pallets and we cut on the ground. So it's really not realistic. Other than that, we do auto extrication and stuff like that, which we can do there as well. We do that now.
Do you use any like fire suppression chemicals in these trainings?
Just straight water.
Just straight water?
Yep. Class A, straight water, and the gas would, you know, has an on and off
Sure.
valve, stuff like that. But we wouldn't be doing any, any foam, so to speak. We wouldn't be doing that, because then we'd have to end up getting that removed. So it'd be strictly just water.
Thank you.
Is there debris removal? Like, are, I mean, are you staging a room and then it's actually lit on?
Yes.
So do you have to remove like?
You'll have any of the ashes and stuff we'll have to take care of.
Yeah.
So we'll end up taking that off-site.
Got it.
Or get a dumpster once in a while to clean it out. But generally, these things are built where the water inside, we use minimal amount of water. So then the water drains out the, you know, the holes out the sides, and then we scoop up and we take care of the straw hay and stuff like that.
Gotcha.
They wouldn't be big, big fires. Maybe a bale of hay and that's in some, you know, particle board.
Yeah.
The gas is, there's going to be a gas line installed? So would the, when you say gas, is that the propane, or is it natural gas?
No, it's propane.
Okay.
So it'd be stored with, and it'd be protected, like what Jeremy said, if we go that route, it'd be protected by boilers. And the propane gas line will go on the ground. It would have to be dig, according to code.
Okay, so there's no natural gas being piped in up from the street?
No, it would be a tank.
Okay.
There is a natural gas line that services the Forge Plant, but we'd be putting in a propane tank on it.
All right, that confused me. Thank you. And will there be some kind of a lip around the edge so that to, to ensure that all the water does go down into that hole?
Yeah, so as I mentioned, it's, it's basically grated from this high point down in this way. So we are proposing a Cape Cod berm around the perimeter here, so that the water will hit that, act like a gutter, and the gutter flow will direct it to the catch basin.
I was thinking you might also want to have it on, on the other side as well, just, you never know.
Yeah, the way it's great. So we, we left it off there. We're showing this as snow storage, so if it were to flow there, it just wouldn't damage or push the Cape Cod berm off. So it is, you know, the water won't flow that way. It's got to come this way. We have about a 1.3% slope, so it shouldn't be an issue.
And definitely no other hazardous materials going to be used?
No, as part of the memorandum of agreement that was between the fire department and the water commissioners, they were fairly strict on the type of materials and what could be burned there. So chemicals were prohibited, firefighting foams, and it's limited to Class A fires. So as was said, it would be, you know, essentially straw, hay, and possibly a wood pallet.
Okay. Thank you.
Bob, do you have any questions on, on this application?
Yeah, I have a couple. What's the plan for the hours of operation?
So, per the, the agreement with the water commissioners, they're limited to seven events per calendar year. And I don't know if we specified hours of operation in there.
Okay. Does this mean it's only going to be used by the town or Westford Fire Department?
Correct. It's not a regional facility. It'll only be allowed to town staff for use.
Okay. The last question I have is just looking at, and I'm less concerned about the proximity to homes, but I'm, have a bit of a concern about proximity to Pine Grove Cemetery. And will there, will there be efforts made to ensure that these training events, for example, don't interfere with a funeral that might be taking place at the cemetery?
Yeah, so as part of the agreement, the... Go ahead.
Mainly I'm concerned about just the noise impact that it might have on a, a service.
So I believe there's an agreement that there wouldn't be any training activities taking place during a funeral. And I think it was last year, the year before, sound study was done. I believe it was done by the, the 35 Tom Farm Task Force, and they determined that the training activities wouldn't be disruptive to the cemetery.
All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Darren, any comments?
No, my questions are going to be around, you know, water and drainage, especially given the proximity to the water department. So it sounds like it's all been addressed, especially with the cistern, so I'm happy with that.
Mike?
I'm good. Thank you.
Yeah, I was mostly interested in debris removal. I wasn't sure how it worked, but you answered that earlier, so. I have no further questions. Uh, Kate, anything else?
Nope.
Nope. All right. At this time, we'll open it up to the public. If anybody from the public would like to comment on PB 2208, now's the time. Seeing none, are we similarly comfortable to, to close and approve on this one?
I assume that the other engineers also reviewed this one?
It was heavily reviewed.
Heavily reviewed.
So no, no, no reservations about closing.
I move we close the public hearing?
Second. Motion in a second to close PB 2208. All those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye.
I move that we vote to approve PB 2208, 60 Forge Village Road, Westford Fire Training Facility.
Friendly amendment with the request that staff share the draft, the decision for review.
Agreed.
Second. Motion in a second to approve PB 2208 with our ability to review the draft decision. All those in favor say aye. Bob?
Was that an aye?
Was that an aye?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Uh, Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, good luck, good project.
Good luck.
Project. Okay. With those two out of the way, it brings us to PB 2201, site plan review at 5 Make Peace Road. The applicant has requested a continuance without discussion to the April 4th, 2022 meeting. Is there a motion to continue PB 2201 to April 4th at 7:00 here in Meeting Room 201 at Town Hall?
I move.
Just a reminder, we were going to set up a site visit.
That is a good point.
Yep.
Any traction on that? Did I miss another yet?
Not quite yet, but give me some more time and I'll get working on it and...
Bob, Bob might be here for it.
Yeah.
All right.
I'm available to second.
All right. So a motion in a second to continue 2201 to April 4th. All those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
I say aye. Okay, with that, we come to the end of the public hearing items on this evening's agenda. We're on to general business. The first item under general business is PB 2210, a request to authorize administrative review and approval for interior renovation at 1 Robbins Road. You have the, come with us? How are you?
Well, I'm good.
Good.
Yeah, one more, here you go.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Joe, for bringing that up there. Just curious, you saw the Bloom Energy Project and where it was before. Do you all want me to bring up an aerial of where we are for context, or do you all know where it is? I know we got these screens up here.
Uh, sure. If you have it, I mean, I guess, yeah, why not?
Reminder.
I don't want to waste your time if you already knew.
No, no. It's good to get a refresher on the project.
Yeah. I'm excited about it.
Nice.
Yeah, I just bought it.
Very nice. Those are fancy.
Wow. What is it?
Surface Pro.
Yeah?
Sleek.
Thank you for asking. You're welcome. All right. May I begin?
Yeah, please.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Mark Gabriel. I'm with Niche Engineering. I'm a project manager there. And with me today, I have Steve Lee, who is with JLL. He's the owner, he's project manager. Where he had to seek today administrative approval for a project located at 1 Robbins Road. The project, as you mentioned before, consists of the interior renovations to the southern portion of the 1 Robbins Road site, existing, which is, is an existing building in construction of utility improvements along the south side of the building. So, taking a step back, here you have 1 Robbins Road right here, 1 Robbins Road right here, 1 Robbins Road over here, and the roadway right up there, Littleton Road. So, and also the site today has, where the project is proposed in the southern portion of the building back here. It's, you've got an existing parking area, driveways, manicured lawns on both sides over here, and existing wetland resource area kind of wraps around the site in this area right here. So that's an overview, excuse me, of the existing site. All right. So, now that we got context there, we have the maps up here. I can speak to the maps up here. The, I got the mouse perfect. So, the project consists of bringing those, bringing existing, we bring utilities into the site, which is some electric lines coming in from the end of Robbins Road. You have a rerouting of a water line around the proposed work. There's one that exists there today, where it goes underneath the transformers in the future Bloom Energy Project, which you all had heard previously in that square, that rectangle right there. And the project includes six, proposed six transformers in the area right there to bring electricity to the building, mechanical house just to the north that houses some chilled water equipment in that area right there. And then the chilled water pipes going across the driveway over to four chilling towers in that location right there. And the chilling towers, the mechanical house, and the area drain in the building to the north, part of the interior work, all discharged to a sewer pump station in that location right there. And because of the elevation of the existing sewer line to the, just to the east of this page, we, and to keep it below frost, we had to pump it out of that area to the existing sewer manhole that's just, again, to the east of that page. The project is within the conservation jurisdiction, and we are, we have a continued discussion with them this Wednesday, that we'll be having. And we presented this a couple weeks ago in front of them. Let's see, the, aside from all, aside from the cooling towers and the mechanical house and the six transformers, the area is just going to be restored back to its pre-existing conditions. The areas, it's just, like I said, loam and seed, and the existing driveways are just going to be patched over as they trench the utilities through there. There's no changes to the proposed building hours or operation or site parking in this area. And as I mentioned, just off to the east, utilities kind of go in that direction. So this, this work, there you go, off to the east in that direction. As, this work is part of the facility's continued growth and research development in this area, and it continues to provide, and it was proposed to provide an increase in energy supply while incorporating the use of energy-efficient equipment in conjunction with that recently approved Bloom project. So, that's the project in a nutshell, and quick, happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Joe, any comments from town staff before we go to the board?
Not really, Mr. Chairman. The conservation commission wanted to get feedback from this board prior to taking any action on, on their end. So, wanted to see if you had any questions, any changes you wanted to see made before they took action.
Great. Thank you. Okay, let's go to the board. Bob, would you care to comment first?
Uh, no, no, I have no questions. Thank you.
Okay, great. Kate?
Um, I know you want administrative review. Is there any fee if it's an administrative review?
$300.
$300. Because my concern is because you are doing site work, that there is a potential for engineering review, and it's, is over a fairly significant area, like 20 fingers, which is...
We want to ask Jeremy McCumber. He's right up there.
Yeah, I know. I, I would be interested to know about engineering, if they have any...
He's here, he's here, Mike.
...apprised of this. Hi, Jeremy.
Hello.
Town engineer. Thank you. My, my comment was they're, they're looking for administrative review, and my concern was because they are doing work over a fairly large amount, digging things up, installing utilities and, and water and such, that I feel as though engineering might want to do a review of the plans.
We took a quick review of it. They will be working in Robbins Road, which is a public way, so they will need a street opening permit for that. But we can certainly take a closer look. You know, we typically don't get, get involved with the sewer improvements and electrical, but you feel...
You do or don't?
Don't.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Those type of utilities. But we could certainly take a closer look at the...
I just didn't know if it warranted a, an engineering review.
I don't think so.
Okay. All righty, thank you.
Thanks.
That was my main thing, was whether or not it, it's, was, if it was on the edge for, for needing a fair amount of time from engineering. And, you know, if, if the board decided they wanted to, to require a review, I mean, more than administrative, I would have been okay with, like, reduced fee or something like that. That was it.
Okay, thanks, Kate. Mike?
Yeah, I'm fine with it, and I understand Kate's concerns. But I think that we'll have eyes from the electrical inspector there and Henry's eyes and everybody else's eyes on it. So I'm fine with it as it is.
Darren?
I'm gonna agree. Yep, I agree.
You're good?
Yep.
I did notice there was an email late into the packet, it was from fire, right?
Fire.
Where, yeah, if you guys have seen that, they're going to want to know if anything is actually, like, I think, an open, open trench anywhere that's going to be there for some, for a long period of time and like to be...
They poured it onto the contract, so we're well aware that, you know, the fire department wants to get involved in trenching and, you know, outside open trenches.
Yeah.
It's actually a good thing.
Yeah, for sure. Otherwise, yeah, I didn't have any specific questions. So I think unless, unless we have any other comments, I guess, was there a motion to...
A move that we authorize administrative review for PB 2210 ADM One Robbins Road for the interior renovation of the southern portion of the existing building and construction utility improvements, including cooling towers as stated in the agenda.
Second. Motion in the second to approve PB 2210 for a, for administrative review and approval. All those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
I say aye. Good luck with your project.
Thank you very much, thank you everybody, appreciate it.
It's the estimated time of completion.
Is it going to be coming back to us for any more?
Estimated time of completion?
Ah, varies, depending on...
What you can get.
Yes, we're hoping October, but the Bloom piece kind of ties in with it. And Nokia's direction may be to push that, if they're not ready to start up and fire up in October or Thanksgiving, maybe push it off a little bit into the early part of '23.
Okay.
Because they have a lot of paperwork issues that they have to go between them and Bloom.
Gotcha.
They don't like to do it between Thanksgiving and, you know how that month goes.
Yep.
Do you think you'll be coming to, back to us for other requests?
I think, yeah, that's, we're shooting for October, November, but I think it might get pushed to January, February.
Great, okay, well, good luck with it.
Thank you.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right. Our next general business topic, item B, is consider a request for minor modifications to prior approval in order to record endorsed plans for PB 1923, definitive subdivision, water management term at 73 Nutting Road, the Wendell Place subdivision. See Attorney Alfred with us, good evening.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Paul Alf, and I am an attorney in Westford, Massachusetts. And I represent Kathleen and William, Kathleen Coyle and William Perry, who you got to know very well during the approval process of the Wendell Place subdivision. I'm getting involved with the project regarding choosing the right developer for the project. And I have reviewed the decisions, and I noticed very clearly in the decision that one of the conditions are that all of the documents that were submitted regarding the project and the Homeowners Association be recorded with the subdivision plan. One of those items is the conservation restriction. Conservation restrictions take months to get approved. They require approval by the Commonwealth. And we can't submit it for approval to the Commonwealth yet because it's still being reviewed by your town council. And so, a practice that I started back in the eighties, even before the planning board had any condition of approval saying that the CR had to be recorded with the original plan, was the recording of a declaration of reservation of conservation restrictions so you can convey the project out to a developer, out to a builder, reserve the right to record the conservation restriction later when it finally gets approved and endorsed by everybody who has to approve and endorse it. And I talked to, Jeff Moore said about this, and he said, well, the board also wants some assurance that it's going to get done above and beyond just reserving the right to do it. Why don't you propose a condition of approval that says we guarantee that it will be recorded prior to the release of X number of lots from the covenant by the planning board. I don't really think that's going to be an issue. I think this will be recorded before pavement goes down in there. But I, I did put a condition, proposed condition of approval in the draft declaration of reservation of conservation restrictions that no more than X number of lots would be released from the covenant before the CR is released. I really don't care what the number is, ten, five, doesn't make a difference. I don't think it's going to be an issue. But would like the ability to be able to proceed and rather than recording with the plan, the final conservation restriction, to record an instrument like the one that I gave you so that we can do it after the, after the fact, when it finally gets approved. Capisce?
Capisce.
All right.
Joe, any comments from town staff on this?
Not really, again, Mr. Chairman. Staff doesn't necessarily see, you know, revising this condition of approval as a major issue for the project to move forward.
Yep.
Again, so long as we do get it before everybody is gone from its development. That's fine with staff.
Got it, great. Well, then we'll go to the board. Does anybody, would anybody care to find for X and pick a number of lots that seems appropriate?
Well, I, I have some comments first. First, on the CR, I was talking to the Chair of the Conservation Commission, and he mentioned that the CR process is a lot more streamlined than it used to be because there's like a boilerplate CR that people tend to use. So I, I noticed you had something in here, I didn't know how much of that was the boilerplate.
That, that is the instrument that was prepared by, by the council for the applicant that went through the subdivision process, I think it's Doug Duchesne. And it's the one that's being reviewed by town council. I'll bet you dollars to donuts that it is the boilerplate.
Yeah, so, so...
I'm used to submitting the boilerplate, and it still takes time. I did the one on, for Mrs. Collins.
Saltbox, yeah.
Yeah, Saltbox Farm, conservation restriction that the town bought, the CR. We used the boilerplate, came back revisions in it from the Commonwealth. It takes, it takes a little time.
So, you know, but I'm, yeah, so I don't know how long it takes. But my concern was that your proposal in here had that we release X lots to sell. And I don't mind releasing X lots for work to start on them. But I, I'm very adamant that the CR has to be in place before any lots are sold. And the reason is because the deeds have to have the language in them that, no, there is a CR in place and, and blah, blah, blah. And if you sell lots before the CR exists, then the deeds are going to have to reference this, what are we calling it, release. And so, then those people who buy their lots before the CR exists, when they go to sell, they're going to just use the same language in their deed and they're not going to know, oh, we have to replace this language with the real language.
So, so not to disagree with a member of a planning board, but one of the few things I'm expert in is in title examination. And every concern you have is unwarranted. But I'm going to agree with you. If you want a condition in here that says that we're not going to release any lots from the covenant prior to the recording of it, I don't care. I think it's going to get done before then.
I do too.
But I'll tell you, the purpose for this declaration being recorded in the chain of title was to exactly address the concern that you have. And that's how we did every other project in Westford during the eighties, the nineties, and the two thousands.
I have, I have no problem with, with your example ones. I just noticed that the one that you proposed for, for this project had the additional clause.
Right.
And, and that's the part, only part that I'm concerned about.
And we added the additional clause so we have assurance that it would be done by a certain date. Back in the day, we didn't even have that clause because everyone knew it would just get done. But I'm happy to amend this to say that no lots will be released from the planning board covenant prior to the recording of the CR, because I'm confident it will get done before then.
Yeah, I, like, like I said, if, if we want to allow construction to start before it's recorded, I don't mind that. It's just release of the lots.
So that's a, that's a simple modification like that, that you eliminate the words. So in that paragraph it says, so now it says, no individual lots should ever be released from the covenant prior to recording in the CR. I have no problem with that.
Okay. And I just found a typo, but I know it'll get caught on review.
Yeah, there's some typos in there, and I'm missing, I put in a apostrophe rather than a closed quotation mark.
It'll be interesting to see on the section related to composting that, because that allows stumps and trees and I can just see that...
I had nothing to do with the CR.
I can just see the, I can just see the construction guys, okay, we're going to put all our stumps we pull up over here in the CR.
And I had nothing to do with the draftmanship of that.
Anyway, that's not my problem, that's conservation's problem. That's all I had.
Okay. Bob, any comments?
No, I, I'm happy to hear that it'll be lots released. My, my concern was to make sure, ensure that any home buyers knew precisely what the agreed to cover, conservation restriction would require of them. And I think if we released lots prior to the formal acceptance of that, that would have allowed for a potential change to the CR. So I just had a concern about the buyers. So with that said, I'm happy, and I support the idea that zero lots will be released. That's all.
And I gotta appreciate it, but I don't want you to get this locked in your head because someday I'd like to come back and pursue a subdivision and not have the CR as a condition of, it can be done this way. It really isn't a problem.
Well, you just make sure when you review the draft decision...
Right, I'm going to say, you can't have that in there.
It wasn't his decision, though.
Right. Mike, do you have anything for this?
Uh, no, uh, no.
Okay, Darren?
Oh, makes sense.
I, I agree. I'm glad we've come to a common ground on that.
I do wonder, though, how many people have actually read their deeds.
Right.
Well, that's the only thing I want to say to them. Nobody knows when they buy a house, what they're buying, anyway. But all that stuff is in the chain of title. And typically, certainly in the deeds I prepare, it's, it's referenced right in there. And when we have the reservation, it, it, it connects the lot to the final CR. But nobody reads this stuff, except me and Mike.
So what do, what do we need to do, Joe? Do we need to take a vote on this?
We should have a vote, just that you're agreeing to amend the condition so that we don't have to have the conservation restriction recorded along with the endorsed plan, that it can be done.
I saw, I saw move with what our...
Whatever he said.
Planner said with, and also that they will, will record this rel, what, I, release the...
Declaration of reservation of conservation restriction with the plan.
With the amendment to remove that.
That no loss will be released. That's amended as discussed.
Yeah, that's amended as discussed.
Thank you.
Second. Motion in the second. All those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
I say aye.
Thank you. While I'm here, any status report on where the review of the documents may be with town council?
Checked in this morning, I haven't heard back yet.
I've heard back, okay. All right, I checked. All right, thank you, see you around.
Good evening.
Good night.
Have a great evening.
You too.
Okay, we're on a general business topic C, which is a request by the Economic Development Committee to seek planning board and select board support to amend the zoning bylaw to create a tiered site plan review system. Administrative, minor, major, as previously identified by the planning board as a top plan priority.
So just trying to keep this brief, as mentioned, I think, last meeting. We started to do research on some surrounding communities. We threw in a couple of examples of things that we found to date. We'll keep digging in other places. First in the packet was just kind of a general discussion on site plan review for the general public about what site plan review is. So a number of places will use a two-tiered system of major and minor. Some will also use a three-tiered with major, minor, and administrative, which I think this board may be interested in. And then, we have, again, examples from some surrounding cities and towns. City of Lowell and Town of Lexington each have a provision that's kind of highlighted in here. I mentioned, I think, last meeting, cases where site plan review and a special permit is required, the planning board becomes a special permit granting authority. Again, it's a way to help streamline permitting, trying to balance multiple public hearings, multiple boards, et cetera, on the applicant side.
I had a question on that. If we become the special permit, then does, does that take away some activities that the ZBA currently does?
It would. For example, if you had an application that was going to have a site plan review and then it triggered a special permit for use, say, this board would become the special permit granting authority for that use. So if, you know, no variance is required for it, it was just, say, the special permit for use, you only have to go in front of one board instead of two. So again, so in that way, it helps on the applicant side, on staff's side, as opposed to trying to juggle multiple notices, multiple staff reports, et cetera. Everything is through one board. And it also gives you more jurisdiction, more discretion in that way because now you're reviewing the special permit criteria as opposed to a different board. So that was one, one thing just to highlight. And then, we live in Town of Lexington, and Town of Pepperell, and Town of Chelmsford, they use either a two or three site plan review system in what triggers a minor versus major. So it's just some, some things to highlight for your review. Obviously, this is kind of a lot to go through. Wouldn't expect a full discussion at this point. But, you know, as you go through and have questions, it's something we can look to schedule with select board indoor EDC people at a later date.
Great.
I don't know if there were any major questions just off the cuff. But this is just, just a starting point and just wanted to get the discussion going.
And do they have any feedback or comments or questions?
No, I guess, it's, it's great. I think it's a long time coming, I think it's going to make things easier for everyone. Applicant, I think it's, it's good, so.
Thank you for the examples. I mean, there's a little bit in each one that I like and other parts I don't like.
Yeah.
So is the thought that Economic Development Committee...
Your favorites?
Is this now going to become a working group? And maybe with a planning board member and economic development or...
Yeah, it's a good question. I think it's still kind of evolving, just as Economic Development Committee is, has looked to try to discuss how the town can streamline, help streamline permitting. You know, saying, kind of that example was, was one example. But it could be a working group, it could just be a joint meeting or two, if you will. I guess we'll kind of, we'll kind of see, just to, everybody kind of gets a...
Because it will need our input, but, and I, I kind of like the three-tiered one because, you know, we have this thing like the poor bunny people. Why should they pay a full site plan review fee for something that's minor?
Yeah, as I think about, you know, what triggers an administrative, what triggers a minor, what triggers a major.
That's the hard part.
Yeah, hard part, right?
I agree, I liked the idea of a three-tiered system as well. Bob, did you have any thoughts on the tiered site plan review?
No, I agree with what was just said by the previous speakers regarding a three system. So I'm kind of looking, though, to how we will accomplish this between the two groups. I think it's, yeah, I agree that I think it's time to address this.
You're not thinking like for fall town meeting? I mean, there's no way for spring, but fall or next, next year's, whenever?
Yeah.
Because we still have to do our rules and regs. They take priority.
And is there a, do we have a date on the calendar for a joint meeting?
Not at this point yet.
Please do.
Okay, great. Okay. Any other comments?
Nope.
All right. And we will move on to general business, item D, which is Stony Brook Village resident, resident concerns. Excuse me.
I'd like to try to call in Jennifer K.
Okay.
She wasn't able to attend the person, but she said she could be called, so.
She wasn't able to attend the person, but she said she could be called, so we'll give this a shot.
Okay?
We don't need Jeremy, do we?
No. Thanks, Jeremy.
Jeremy, thanks.
Hi, Jennifer, this is JoJo. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. You're up on the agenda now, so I wanted to give you a call, and you can feel free to go into some of the resident concerns over at Stony Brook Village.
Okay, so you want me, so you're going to call me back? Or you want me to call that number?
You're, you're up on the agenda now, so you can, you can feel free to speak.
Oh, okay.
His cellphone, you're on his cellphone and you're next to a microphone, so you, your voice will get recorded.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Kate. So I appreciate you all letting me address some of the challenges and the work that we've kind of been working through with community teamwork and Peabody Properties, and of course, more important, the residents at Stony Brook. And as, and I know you all are aware that you've received a letter that stated some of the concerns that residents have had with management. And you probably wondered why, I really don't know why, you know, the COA Board and myself are coming to you tonight regarding this issue. But recognizing that, what little I know about the Planning Board, recognizing that you all are probably kind of, you're a very crucial, maybe first step in reviewing and asking questions about potential developments for the town of Westford, and just recognizing some of the challenges that we've had with, with this tip, this particular development, and not that we couldn't have potential problems with other developers, especially as we're getting more affordable housing, low-income housing, supportive housing, mixed-use housing. And it just was a concern, is there anything, is there anything more that maybe could be done on the front end with developers being excited to come into Westford and have this opportunity to build these projects? And I was just wondering, you know, from a planning, a planning committee, recognizing the authority and, I don't know, and the influence that you have on future developments in Westford is, is extremely valuable. And are there some safety measures that perhaps we could consider in trying to ensure, you know, ensure good management? And if there are significant issues that require town departments or town staff to get involved, you know, what is that process? Is there a process to address these concerns? So that's kind of why I was reaching out to you on behalf of our COA Board. You know, are there some safety measures that we could put in place on behalf of the town when developers are coming into, into town with special projects concerning affordable low-income housing or other related housing community issues? You know, is there something that, could there be a language in the comprehensive permit or the compliance report, you know, that maybe just ask, you know, especially in the, and, and I'm not sure, you know, if every, I'm thinking that every affordable housing development has to do an annual compliance report? I might be wrong on that. And if they are required, is there any way we could adapt some language to put in there, you know, that maybe just ask, you know, the question, are there reasonable accommodations or outstanding work orders that have not been addressed in this fiscal year that may be rolling over into the next year? And if so, like, how many? You know, how do they prioritize special accommodation requests and work orders? You know, when there's a change in, you know, or have there been significant changes in management? And if so, you know, what have those challenges been? You know, can, can we ask developers that are putting in affordable and low-income housing if there could be maybe quarterly or semi-annual talent, tenant meetings between management and the tenants? And invite a town representative to also be a part of that? You know, I don't know if somebody's, you know, that representative could be someone like our Affordable Housing Director, who is extremely knowledgeable about fair housing and, you know, typically, I believe, reviews many compliance reports on the behalf of the town. So these are just, just some thoughts that I don't know if the Planning Board could consider, or if, you know, I'm just trying to, we're just trying to figure out what type of measures, safety measures we can put in place when there's significant management concerns. And how can we be accountable to the residents when the management seems to be in flux or failing?
Let me ask a question. Well, I'll ask, Joe might know better than you, or you might know because you've been delving into this. We, we do a, we do a review, and the decision is for the developer. But then, once it's built, these generally get passed on to a nonprofit. And so I don't know, like, who does the handoff? Maybe, I don't know if that's something maybe that goes in the, could go in a decision for this kind of thing, that there's a condition that when there's a handoff, well, no, because we can't require something that requires another committee. But once it get, gets handed, handed off, I would think that the, our housing authority would have to be involved in reviewing any contract with that nonprofit that allows them to be the one to manage the site, and that it would be in that contract.
And for some reason, I don't know if Jeff is in the meeting or not, it seems like there are some developments that don't have, and that's why I was wondering if Jeff is in there, or you all might know the answer, that don't have to submit the compliance report to the housing authority. It goes to someone else. And that would be an interesting, that would be, because I, to your point, I think if we did have someone within the town that was just reviewing kind of what the year looked like, and you would, I would think our housing authority would be an awesome person to do that. But I don't know if every development that's affordable or low-income has to submit a compliance report to our housing authority director.
So let me ask, if I may, this is Mike. So these units are owned by the housing authority and managed by Peabody Properties, isn't that correct?
No, they're not, they're, no, not the ones that we're talking about currently. They were built by Community Teamwork or Common Ground, which is a subsidiary of Community Teamwork.
And so who was the owner?
Who owns it?
This is Bob. I guess Mike, I mean, so this is Bob. I guess, and I apologize because I'm also on a phone connection, that's why it's a little odd here. But I guess I'm, I'm very concerned, and I share kind of some dismay here, because if I recall correctly, this is a project where we took town-owned land and we went as a town to, and, and kind of contracted with Community Teamwork to build this unit. This is not a third party, this was not a third party who owned the property and came forward with a proposal. This was something we did as a community. The other part of this that concerns me is, I, I think we might also have to involve the Board of Selectment, because I'm not sure all of the documents which governed this process necessarily came from the Planning Board. I think this was a, an effort that involved the Board of Selectment. I seem to recall it involved town meeting. And I find that troubling, because I would hope that we of all would, would be able to watch up something we were bringing into town, much better than a third party would who was just proposing a development project.
I appreciate that, Bob. Thank you.
Yeah, because to me, you'd think there would be some kind of document with the performance thing clause, that if they don't do well, then, then they could get kicked out, and the town or whoever could go find a different management company.
Right, so according to the, the record card, it's owned by the Westford Housing Authority, but managed by Peabody Properties, so.
Well, if I could say, I don't know if this is the proper setting to say what I'm going to say, but I do know, I have been in communication with our Westford Housing Authority Director about this concern, as well as our board. And I know she has shared an interest in saying, you know, if there was ever an opportunity for the Westford Housing Authority to be able to manage this property, that she would love that opportunity. I'm just putting that out there, but just experience, I just don't know how much I'm saying, just experience that I have been a part of in these last meetings between, with Community Teamwork and Peabody Properties and some of the residents, these virtual meetings, you know, it just feels like there's just a very stronghold with Peabody Properties. And, you know, I, I don't know Peabody Properties, I just know we, it's, they're, it, it, there's just been, it, it's just, just several concerns with the way the residents have been treated.
Yeah.
Do, do we know, do we know how long they have the contract to be the, essentially the caretakers of the site? The property management?
That I don't know. I know, you know, I've asked some follow-up questions in some of the virtual meetings, and I've kind of, you know, been asked to communicate through Bill Lipschitz and Karen Frederick. They did not want me to talk to Peabody Properties, which is fine. And I have been communicating, but I haven't gotten responses that I was hoping to get. And I'll, you know, and I know, you know, one of the concerns with many of the residents is, you know, they feel like if they speak up, you know, they might put themselves in jeopardy to lose, you know, the housing that they so desperately need. So it's just, it's just a concern. It's a concern, and just wanted to share this with the Planning Board and just see if there's any safety measures that we could put in place to kind of prevent these type situations.
Jennifer, Jennifer, this is.
Some steps, yeah.
Yeah, this is Darren, so, I don't know, I mean, is there, does, does Peabody have onsite presence? Do they have someone onsite that's the manager?
They do. They have a, that's one of the things that has come out of what the, two of the virtual meetings that we have, we, because a lot of the residents said they never know who the manager was, you know, they never got any type of communications, they didn't get any change, they never knew when staff, there was a staff changeover. And then another significant concern was when there is staff changeover, all the work orders and the special accommodation requests, there's no, there's no continuity, there, there's no system in place for anyone to know, you know, they're having to start over, the residents are having to start over and put those accommodation requests in. But they have, you know, since the last two meetings, they have submitted a kind of a get-to-know-your-staff sheet, which shows pictures of the staff members and their names. So that has been put in place.
So, yeah, I mean, I think there's, there's some accountability there with the, the management team and company.
But there's just.
They should, they should also recognize, if they're any good, that there's, there's, you know, their conditions are not good. I mean, if they see maintenance issues, the management company should be addressing those on their own, in their own best interest, as opposed to if someone says, hey, my ceiling's leaking.
You know, Peabody's properties and CTI recognize that they need to do a better job in putting systems in place for these work orders and these special accommodation requests. And, you know, I know I spoke to a resident on Friday, just trying to follow up on some, you know, seeing how things are going. And, you know, she just shared that she had just had her inspection, and the new manager, you know, came in, and he, you know, she was, she said, you know, she was, she felt good about her inspection, you know, he had pointed out things that she had not considered as big issues that he had listed as repairs, but she also shared with me that she, she has, still has special accommodation requests that have, that were put in place a long time ago that still haven't been addressed. And she's like, I just don't know where all this is going to fall out, you know? You know, will my, will these repairs get done in the next 60 days? But what happens to these other special accommodation requests that haven't been addressed, you know? So, you know, there's just so kind of unknowns. And, you know, I, I don't know what the process is that Peabody and maybe Community Teamwork has put into place to address this. So, yeah.
Yeah, like, like Mike said, you know, if, if the housing authority has control of this part of the Stony Brook area development, you would think that they would be the ones with the contract with CTI and, and that other company.
But I don't think they understand that. I don't know, is Jeff in this meeting? By any chance, is Jeff available? Jeff Morset?
He's not, he's not with us this evening, so.
But, but Joe's here.
Yeah, Joe from Town Staff is here, and he's the town planner, but he may not have the full background that, that Jeff would have on this.
Yeah, because like I said, I know that the Housing Authority Director would, would love to, she has, you know, I know she said, you know, police officers have come to see her about their concerns about tenants. And she said there wasn't anything that she could do. So that's, but hearing what you all are saying and hearing what she's saying, there seems to be some confusion, I think.
Unless, unless, unless the agreement had to be with the Board of Selectment, I mean, somebody's going to have to research this.
It seems like to me that there'll have to be some digging in terms of, you know, who may have.
Who signed the.
Management, you know, responsibilities following, say, occupancy permits getting issued. Sounds like it could be the Housing Authority.
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm still trying to come back to what we would condition in a future decision like this.
I'm not sure there is anything.
Well, could we, if the Westford Housing Authority was going to have the, hold the property, I mean, it comes down to the performance reports for the property management company, and I guess.
So it's got to be some type of contract that Peabody has with the Housing Authority that gives them some autonomy, right? So I think that's what we need to, or what I would suggest the Board of Selectmen or somebody needs to look into, is how Peabody is contracted and, you know, who holds that contract.
That would be great.
Because everything I can find here is, is online says, the Westford Housing Authority is the owner of this property.
Yeah. And would we, would we even have the authority?
I mean, we don't have any authority here.
No, no, but, but like to condition something where if, if the property management failed to meet some sort of service performance over time, it could give the Westford Housing Authority the ability to exit the contract early, exact, you know, but, but I'm not even sure that that's her view of this board.
No, because this one we could, because it's a town piece of parks, and we could require the town representative to be.
Westford owns it.
Right, right.
But I don't even, again, I'm not sure we're not outside of our purview of that.
But, but if it's something like Littleton Road, where it's a private guy who's going to, owns it and going to build it, there's nothing we can do. And, no, another thing is, there must be like Better Business Bureau, something like that for nonprofits.
No, I still think that the Housing Authority needs to dive into this a little bit further.
No, but I'm just saying if it continues, that, that's what.
Peabody Properties certainly isn't.
Doing what they're contracted to do.
Yeah.
Right.
To get it on record with, with some authority where keep other entities that might want to contact with them and look and see how many stars they get.
Right.
Is there, Kate, is there some way that we could explore how the Westford Authority is positioned in this particular situation?
We have to, we have to look like, you had the, our decisions up.
Yeah, the decisions are in the packet.
Yeah, but.
There's no conditions ongoing.
No, but it has to say who's the owner and who's the applicant.
My suggestion would be to go before the. My suggestion would be to go before the Board of Selectment and make sure that they're aware of what's going on. So, once the building, you know, the, the project is signed off on it, it's somewhat out of our control, or it's not somewhat, it is out of our control, unless they're violating conditions of their approval. And if we couldn't condition any of this in our decisions, you know, we'd certainly like to help you, you know, and we may do some research offline and get in touch with you privately. But, you know, I, my suggestion would be to follow up with the Board of Selectment on this.
Yeah, okay, well, I, I, we can do that. But again, I just did also want to see if there's things that the planning board could do on the front end when developers are coming before them with maybe some stronger language in the, in the compliance report that, you know, and is everyone required to submit a compliance report that is low-income or affordable housing to our Westford Housing Authority Director just to, just to stay abreast of kind of how the property is, is being managed and functioning?
Unfortunately, that's not something we can put in our decisions because it relies on a different board.
Okay. What board would that roll up? Would that be the-
The Housing Authority. The Housing Authority.
Oh, that would be the Housing Authority Board, okay.
And generally, once a building gets over a certain number of units, there's a specific inspection required, which is through the Building Department. And that allows the Building Department to go in, you know, once a year, once every three years, whatever the threshold is. So that way they're able to find any building issues.
Yeah.
That's a building code item, that's not, you know.
Yeah, but, but if some of this is building code issues with things not working correctly and stuff.
Well, and that's also border health stuff, that's, you know, warranty of habitability.
Right, there's somebody without hot water for three weeks. I mean, that's just-
Yeah, and so the border health should know about that because whoever owns it will then get in a lot of hot water with the-
They can get fined.
Fine, absolutely. So, and they'll have a certain time period to have it fixed, and if it's not, they, they get fined and it's, you know, the border health has a lot of authority there. A cracked, a missing screen or a cracked tile in a kitchen floor is a violation of the warranty of habitability and the border health could go and fine them for not repairing that tile.
Okay, well, that's good to know. That's, that's, yeah, that's, that, you know, that's, you know, that's something we would love to try to, and we, you know, we're trying to also educate and we want the tenants to be able to advocate for themselves, but we also realize that they're in a vulnerable situation too. But that's a really good, I appreciate that, that's, that's helpful information.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, good luck.
Okay, so I'm assuming that your recommendation is just for me to go, are you all going to be able to research or is that, do I need to do that through the Westford Housing Authority? How do I find out kind of what the responsibility is?
Jennifer, I will, I'll take a couple of minutes if I can be, this week, and I'll take a look at what I can find out and I'll shoot you an email. I have your contact information on your letter, so.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Yeah, because otherwise you would have to probably go to the town manager to request that some staff member get tasked to look into this.
Okay, okay, well, I, any help that you can give me and I appreciate the, the things that you shared with me that I wasn't aware of.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much for bringing this to our attention, we appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you, okay.
And good, good luck, and thank you for helping the residences, that's really appreciated.
Oh, well, that's why we're here, thank you. Okay, okay, thanks.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay. That brings us to the end of our general business topics for this evening. Next up, we have a review of minutes. Let's get to that section. Is, is there a motion to approve the minutes from February 7th, 2022?
移動
Motion in a second, is there any discussion on the minutes?
I did. Did you?
Yeah, just line 250 says Donald Wilder and I think it's Jonathan Wilder.
And I left my computer with my comments in it, but I think line 171, which is Two Park Drive, it says Hollister did not support based on building commissioner's explanation. I'd like to replace that sentence because I, I didn't understand, I felt that it should be, I thought it could have been an administrative review, so I would change this to Hollister suggested reducing the application fee to zero, but it did not get board support. And Darren, I don't know, you had, you had made a comment about having them possibly see about getting some dedicated parking spaces. I don't know if you wanted that in there or not.
No, I think that was Bob, I actually talked about having them stagger the drop-off times.
Oh, that was it, yeah.
And I think it's referenced in there, I think it just says, the board suggested having staggered drop-off times, which is fine.
Yeah, that coordinate drop-off and pick up so it doesn't conflict with other businesses. So I didn't know if you wanted that added as a comment or not.
No, I mean, Bob, did you, I think you had brought that up, you want to add that in?
Yeah, that's fine, yes.
I have that you were the one.
Yeah, I think I, no, I definitely did the-
You were the coordinating the drop-off.
Coordinating the top drop-off time, right, yeah.
I, I definitely did ask about dedicated parking spaces. And I recall the presenters saying that that was a good suggestion and they would, the, the property owner.
Yeah. Let me see. And on Eight Flag Road, maybe after line 224, I don't know if it should be the same paragraph or a new paragraph, I, I just wanted my comment in there that Hollister stated she was not in favor of above-ground utilities and would, would not support a waiver request for such. And I think that was all I had on this one.
Okay, Bob, any comments on the February 7th minutes beyond what's been discussed?
Nothing, nothing in addition to what we've just stated.
Darren?
Good.
You're good? Great. Okay, motion in a second to approve the minutes from February 7th, all those in favor say aye, Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
Say aye. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from, if I can get that-
March-
March 7th of 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the March 7th minutes, is there any discussion?
I don't think I had anything on this one.
No.
I had nothing on it.
No.
Bob?
I'm good.
Okay, no discussion, motion in a second to approve March 7th minutes, all those in favor say aye, Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
Say aye, great. All right, that is all of the minutes for this evening. That brings us to correspondence reports and updates. There is a note in here from Paul. Yes. Okay, yes, we had a little bit of correspondence.
We did?
Yes.
A one-pager.
Yes. Engineering, myself, observed out on Front Row's subdivision, they did go beyond the scope that this board had identified as being work that would not be significant between November 15th and April 15th. So the engineering department was interested in having a stop work order issued for work just within the right-of-way, still allowing them to continue to work on lots, as I think the board intended, but just basically to stop any work within the right-of-way area. So, didn't know if the board had any feedback, if you'd like the applicant to appear, say, at the next meeting to explain why they did the work that they did. But just, we wanted to bring it to your attention, and again, didn't know if you wanted this to remain with staff or if you wanted to get an explanation from the applicant.
So has this stop order been issued?
Has not been issued yet, we want to get, you know, feedback from the board. We have had communication with the developers, they have stopped working as of now, but...
I think they should come in.
Yeah, I mean, we gave pretty clear direction, I feel like.
Yeah, I mean, they had, you know, kind of a list of items and you all, you know, went through, said this one, this one, and this one, skip these and gave them-
And everybody else stopped.
A fairly clear direction.
Yeah, and they had more than anybody else, so. I'd like to hear why.
Yeah, all right.
I think they should issue a stop work order until they come in and tell us the why.
Do you want us to take a vote on that stop work order or no?
I don't think you'll necessarily need to, you know, I think direction's pretty clear.
Yeah.
So.
Great, yeah, the work should stop and, yeah, we'd like to see them in an upcoming meeting.
Okay.
Great.
Sounds good.
Okay, fantastic. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion in a second to adjourn the meeting, all those in favor say aye, Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
Can I say aye?